Watching the ballpark. Behind you says it's four hours. The problem which I try to get her is that it's six oh three. I'm still gonna give people all over the time. Not seen anybody that looks like they're watching. We have an option, so I won't put out my please be silent signs.
I feel bad.
Okay, I'll get it out if I need to, right down there. Uh, not with you.
If you don't do them now, you'll have to do them next month.
Oh, the next?
Yeah.
You have one correction.
Uh, why don't we call this to order and we can take care of this thing. The meeting of the Cana Beach Planning Commission is in order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Okay, did you get that, Alicia?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Risley?
Aye.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Uh, consideration of the minutes for Planning Commission meeting on February 16th, 2017.
Yeah, I just have one correction, which is that I did make a site visit to, um, the location of the property that we approved last week. The Elster setback reduction request. It says here that no one had made a site visit.
Uh, that's a mistake because I did too.
Okay, I.
Okay.
All right.
That it usually says site visits were declared. Does it not say that? I have gotta pull it out, sorry.
Where does it say nobody did? Oh, yeah. Site visits were declared. I think you're, yeah, you were lucky in the wrong place.
Oh.
Okay.
All right.
Even better. Anybody else have a correction? I can, I can add something. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as then?
I would approve them.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alicia?
Commissioner Kerr?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Risley?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Okay, do we need to cap dance for that?
No, no, I will, um, we're, um, ready to start?
Yes.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to introduce Meg Reed, who's with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, state agency we work fairly closely with, although you don't often see them at hearings here. But I actually work with, there's half a lot on ongoing planning items and long-range planning items. The department has a grant and a memorandum of understanding with us and several other small jurisdictions on the coast to do some long-range planning work related to tsunami resilience. And I sent you, I sent you the wrong document last month. This month I corrected that and sent you the right document. I hope you read both of them. They're both actually pretty worth a bit of your time. But Meg is here to talk about the second one. This is a work session because I think you're, for several reasons, you're not gonna be voting on anything. There's no proposal in front of you. I think ultimately this will lead to, um, some proposals that will be squarely in your wheelhouse, amendments to the town plan and zoning ordinance. May also lead to things that are not really part of your agenda, but could be related to work with the EPREP, the City's Emergency Preparedness Committee does. I invited EPREP to this meeting. One member is here. I don't know whether you want to invite him up to the table to participate also.
That's probably.
That's probably appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, can you push that forward a little more?
Uh, could it work better if it gets part of the table?
Well, it was just covering, it's actually filling more than the whole screen right now.
Yeah, so do we want to get it closer?
Is it like all the focus?
I don't know.
Uh, I don't think so. It's not, it's not a real new machine.
Yeah. It's not too important anyway. I can just talk through it.
Well, okay, now if I break the screen and put it far under this table.
You wanna do that? Let me do that. It's my idea, too many of them anyway.
I have it's gonna six.
Yeah, that looks better. It's too low.
Yeah.
That's good.
Back in that?
Yeah. Um, okay, so, um, I'm Meg Reed, like Mark said, I'm the Coastal Shore Specialist with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Um, and within there is the ocean, or the Oregon Coastal Management Program, which administers statewide land use programs for the state and then specifically on the coast. And so we work very closely with all the city and county planning jurisdictions along the coast. Um, and my specialty is on coastal hazards. Um, so I work a lot on whole ATE issues, including dune management, erosion, and right now a lot of my focus is on tsunami resilience through land use planning, which is a kind of a different and new thing. Not a lot of people, um, have done very much tsunami load goods work through land use planning, um, and not just in Oregon, although many more are starting to do it now, but just in, in whole belief in general. Um, so it's kind of a new thing, but is very important and has, has a key role to play in overall tsunami resilience for a community. Um, so this project of special merits, so that's, um, it's a funding source that comes from NOAA's Office for Coastal Management. Um, it's a competitive funding source that nationally any coastal program can apply for, and we applied back in, I think in 2015, and we're successful in getting the grant. And so, um, it actually includes all of these communities listed here, um, Cana Beach, Tillman County, um, most of their unincorporated communities are involved, and then Walport, Florence, Reedsport, Coos Bay, North Bend, and the, um, unincorporated communities in Coos County that are along the coast. Um, and so the, the grant that we got funding for officially started October 1st of 2016. Um, and so we're, we're kind of getting started now. Um, as Mark mentioned, the city of Cana Beach had signed a memorandum of agreement to participate in this project with us, um, to work on tsunami land use resilience. Um, for the city, you guys can move forward now because you already have, um, the Dogami Beat the Wave map results. I don't know if you're very familiar with those or not, but, um, you guys were the pilot project for that mapping for Dogami, and so you already have those rap results, and so we can move forward, but actually.
Those are little freehold maps that we have for, for.
They're a little different, but I'll show you.
Oh, okay.
Then, um, but my point is that the rest of the communities actually don't have that modeling yet, and they'll be getting it through this grant. And so they're gonna be starting a little bit later this summer and fall with their project work. And that's because, um, the modeler at Dogami who does all this beat the wave modeling, she's on maternity leave. So, but we're a little delayed in our starting with those communities, but with Cana Beach, we can move forward now. Um, so I wanted to talk kind of about what the city would be involved with for this project, and then kind of talk through some of the specific examples of our land use guide and other resources that you guys have available to you. Um, so really, uh, the city is, is, would review a tsunami risk, which you're probably pretty familiar with at this point, um, and then think about what kinds of land use measures you'd like to move forward with. And as Mark mentioned, that could be, um, comp plan and zoning code, um, measures. And, um, we also have something called a Tsunami Evacuation Facilities Improvement Plan, which I know is not bold, but is, um, a really, um, I think, a useful, comprehensive tool that can help, um, kind of pull together all the things that you're already doing and then really identify needed improvements and how you might finance that moving forward. Um, and then a public process for how you'd move forward with those land use measures and, and get public input. Um, it could also entail potentially to get like a project management team or something like an advisory committee, something that has public input along the way in addition to the public hearings that we normally have.
I can interrupt briefly.
Yeah.
Some of the evacuation improvement stuff is gonna likely end up in our TSP, our Transportation System Plan. If we start that this year, that probably gets back to you sometime next year. So a lot of the physical improvements, even though they aren't language regulars, or improvements still will come through you because they're in the Transportation System Plan that we have.
Is that the thing that we do annually where we talk about marketing?
No, this is a far bigger thing than Cana Beach hasn't done this in the past because we're below the population for our needing one. But, um, the city council's elected to do that anyway, and we're folding in, um, evacuation related improvements into that work program. So you'll see those, even though they're not necessarily regulatory of nature.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good point. It's like, there's so many ways that tsunami resilience can kind of integrate into the fabric of the community with things that you already do, um, but just kind of have that lens over top of it of thinking about earthquake and tsunami. Um, so this is just to talk about some resources. Um, as Mark mentioned, you have the tsunami guide, which was developed by the Department of Land Conservation and Development in 2014 with, um, an addition in 2015. Um, and it was collaboratively written with lots of people all over the, up and down the coast. Um, and so we had a lot of local input because we wanted to really make sure it was a product that could be used at a local level for land use planners. Um, so hopefully that's what, what has been developed, and I'll go through a little bit more specifically what's inside of that. Um, but then I've been looking through some things that the city's already done. I looked through your Up and Out Wayfinding Project that occurred in 2014. I don't know if you're very familiar with that. I think it was a, a school in Portland, um, kind of did it as a pilot, at Cana Beach as a pilot project, looking at your evacuation signage that's existing and what could be improved and how to sort of standardize, um, signs and where they're placed and things like that. So that could potentially be useful. Yeah, they had some recommendations. Um, and then the South Wind Master Plan, which, um, shows where the city is planning to relocate some essential facilities down the road. So that's really important and can fit into this work. Um, and then just, you know, other hazards projects and, and staff members that have some technical expertise that can help with this. So these are the maps that you're probably used to seeing, and I know it's a little blurry, but this is Dogami's pins or the tsunami inundation maps.
This is the same map that's on the back wall.
Yeah, and so these, um, show the different, they're called T-shirt scenarios, and this is all the different earthquake scenarios that can happen from a local cascade event, and they're, um, small through extra, extra large. And so those are the different, the deep purple is the small, and it goes all the way out to the light yellow, which is the extra, extra large. Um, and so that shows the boundary of inundation, um, for Cana Beach. And so this is a really good product that, um, could be helpful if you wanted to develop a tsunami hazard overlay zone, which would be kind of similar to flood hazard overlay zone. And you would use the boundaries of these inundation maps to, to be the zone, and then there would be some regulations that would be attached to that. Um, and you could specify based on the scenario that you decided was appropriate. So for example, you know, um, from large lower, you know, we don't allow hospitals to be built in the inundation zone, something like that, which is already a requirement through building code, but it sort of helps to match up that with the land use planning side of things. Um, and so this is not to be confused with the evacuation maps, since Dogami has already produced, and these are also widely available all up and down the coast. And so this shows, this is a public product that's meant for evacuation purposes. And the orange is the, the maximum considered distance tsunami event. So if something happened in Alaska and we would get a tsunami wave from there, we'd have more time and it wouldn't indeed as far. Um, and then the maximum considered local event is the yellow, and then the green is the safe zones. And it also shows sort of general arrows of where the, where you evacuate and, um, the assembly areas and some of the major essential facilities in the city, like, um, City Hall or Fire Department, something like that. That's usually what these products show. But these are the more detailed products that I've been talking about, the Beat the Wave Maps. That's sort of the, the slang term for them. And I know it's kind of hard to see on these, but they're, um, they're, they basically show how fast someone from every part of the city would have to move in order to get to high ground in time. And it also takes into account, um, the bridge failures. Um, so both the bridges over Coldwood Creek would fail in this instance, and so people in those areas would have to build an alternative way up and out. And so for the city of Cana Beach, I think it's pretty clear that your most troubling zone is that downtown area by Coldwood Creek. And, and that's important because that's where a lot of tourists are who might not be very familiar with the town's landscape and geography and who need to get out, um, quickly if there was a tsunami event. So, um, this is an important area to look at, not only for improving evacuation routes, but also potentially, um, a vertical evacuation structure or something like that, or retrofit to the bridge, or pedestrian bridge, which I know are all things that the city has considered at some point. Um, so that's kind of just a helpful tool that it really kind of helps you visualize where the, the challenging areas are. Um, but the rest of the city, especially in the southern part of the city, are, basically people have to move east and they'll get to high ground pretty quickly. So what can you do in terms of land use? Um, so we kind of think about this in three main ways, but it's definitely, like I said, this is new work, so we're open to, to know what you guys want to do, and you know your community is the best. So, um, I think we want to make sure this is tailored to what you think would work. Um, so we have some sample flat, um, Conference of Plan text, policies, things like that, map amendments. And then you could do, like I mentioned before, tsunami hazard overlays zone in your, in your zoning ordinance. And then, um, as Mark mentioned, in your Transportation System Plan, you can do some evacuation planning, um, that can be folded into that, um, and it kind of takes a conference of look. So I'll kind of walk through those different things in the context of our tsunami land use guide, which you have in front of you. And please feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have questions or something that don't make sense.
I might take a few seconds to see if moving this thing back actually gives us a chance of getting it. And, and better focus. What's that?
Oh, there you go.
Oh, okay, good.
The screen is not really squared up. Is that helping?
Yeah.
Yep, there we go. Yeah, that's a good compliment. It's good. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, the first two chapters of the guide are kind of just kind of orienting you to the hazard and, um, how you can use the guide. Um, it does have some lessons learned from the Japanese event that happened in 2011, which would be very comparable to what we can expect here. Um, and I just put up this graphic because I think it's kind of interesting how they're approaching their land use now. I mean, they kind of get to start from scratch a little bit because they, you know, they were pretty much wiped out. And so, and they have similar geography to here where there's really steep hills right next to the coast. And so basically they're like building into the hills and tearing up and, and putting their residential and emergency things above the inundation zone. Now, I'm not saying that that's what we're gonna do here, so that's obviously not going to happen. Um, but I just think it's an interesting approach, um, to look at, and, you know, while we are not gonna emulate them, there might be some things that we can learn from their process. And I think some of that stuff is in the guidebook. Um, and so again, how to use the guidebook is on chapter two. You guys, I think, of most cities on the, on the coast are farther along than a lot of other ones, so, um, you might not need this as much, but it's just a good way to kind of orient yourself to resilience planning for land use. And then it really gets into the meat of things, starting with chapter three, which is comp plan provision. So there's actually, um, some sample texts in there that can, um, be folded into your conference of plan, um, or tailored as you'd like. Um, and they kind of range on whole different, uh, host of things from like debris management to education and outreach, um, and, uh, urbanization, all the different, kind of like within the planning goals, there's some different policies that can be, again, with that lens of tsunami resilience. Um, and some sample language that I'll just, um, as an example, and I thought this would be appropriate because you have that South Wind Master Plan, um, is not only to plan for relocating essential facilities, which are already starting to do, but then also what are you gonna do with the vacated sites that those essential facilities are leaving from? So if you have a police station that's in the inundation zone now and you move it up to high ground, then you could put in some provisions for making sure that whatever comes into that site does not increase your tsunami risk, but actually helps to either keep it the same or reduce it. And, and there's different things you could do with that, like make it public park or something like that. Or if you were gonna have, say, a hotel come in, build, they would have to, um, put in mitigation measures, like, uh, in advance, or improvements to evacuation routes and signage or something like that, and doing education with the ho, with the customers that come to their hotel, something that mitigates for the risk. Um, so those are just some things that you can think about. Um, for example, in Walport, you might know that they moved their high school from the inundation area up onto the hill, and that was actually a partnership with FEMA money that they used. And so now they're trying to figure out what to do with that site that's been vacated, and they've come up with some different plans. The one thing that seems to hold some traction is, um, to build an outdoor amphitheater. And so it would have a lot of people at one time for a state concert or something, but it would happen so rarely throughout the year that it probably, the risk is pretty low. You might only have like five events a year or something. It's a benefit to the town and it still reduces their tsunami risk. So thinking creatively like that is kind of, um, what we're thinking about with this, the vacated sites. Um, and then with, so then there, there's a lot of other examples in chapter three. I didn't want to get into too many, but I just wanted to show at least one example. Um, and then chapter four is about development code provision. So this would be in two years, zoning ordinance. And again, what we sort of recommend is doing is tsunami hazard overlay zone, which would use the boundary of those inundation maps, and then you would have some regulations that would, could go along with that. And generally, we, we say that this would apply to new development or substantial redevelopment. It would not, obviously would not affect anything that's already there. Um, and then usually it doesn't necessarily affect single-family dwellings on existing lots. They would be upset from these provisions as well, but it's, it's up to you. That's just a recommendation that we found works for others. Um, so a couple of things that this does generally, the biggest thing I think is incorporating evacuation measures. So it's not necessarily saying that you can't develop or you can't build. It's just saying that if you do, you should look to incorporate evacuation measures into those designs so that you're keeping people safe and you're helping the city to, to really improve its evacuation all on a comprehensive level. Um, it would limit some, certain uses, and that's generally, um, or could limit certain uses if you doesn't have to. Um, it usually aligns with what I said before, the building code requirements, which is already a requirement in law. So there's the Senate Bill 371 line, um, if you're familiar with, but it's basically, um, Dogami had to develop a regulatory line of inundation. Um, I don't remember when it was, early 2000s, I think. And, um, and it is roughly the large line for the T-shirt maps. And it says that you can't build a hospital in there, you can't build a new fire station, you can't build a new school, things like that, unless you get a waiver, um, from Dogami that it, you, like, if there was a need for, because you can't build a school anywhere else. Like in Geohurd, for example, they're really challenged. They have like nowhere to go, so, and they need a new fire station. So they've been in consultation with Dogami to be able to come up with a site, and they might mitigate for it. They might build a vertical evacuation structure within the design of the fire station to mitigate for the fact that it's in the inundation zone. So there's, there's ways around it. There's a way to be creative because obviously we're in a very challenging geographic setting. Generally speaking, you don't have a lot of room to go. Um, so it's just trying to think about the risk and mitigate for it. And then we can all, you can potentially provide flexible development options. So that would be if you, um, things that would normally be allowed to be developed in that zone, um, you might, um, have a waiver for setback requirements or density requirements or something like that if the proposal, um, mitigates for tsunami above and beyond what's already required. This probably doesn't apply in the city because there's probably not a lot of vacant lots and big vacant lots. I don't know, it's just what I'm assuming, but, um, that's something that we've thought of, like maybe if there was a, like a new subdivision that was gonna go in, part of the lot was out of the inundation zone, part of it was in it, you could allow more density to be built on the area that was not in the inundation zone so that you protect. And there's probably a hundred different ways that that scenario could play out, but it's just to think about, like, how can we help people develop without, uh, increasing the risk? I don't know if that makes sense. Um, so that's development code provision. Then the next chapter is on how you can finance these different things. Um, so we have a lot of, um, they're, they're basically, they're concepts that have been around for a long time. They just may not have been used for tsunami mitigation before. Um, and so there are a lot of existing things, um, like for example, the CRS programs as Cana Beach participate in that for its, for flood insurance. Yeah, so you get credits for doing certain things to reduce flood risk as a community that helps your, um, the people who have to pay for flood insurance reduce their rates. You can get some of those credits through tsunami mitigation. Um, there's, I think, nineteen actions that FEMA recognizes as FEMA, as tsunami mitigation options that can help get more CRS credits. Um, so that's something that can be helpful. Um, FEMA has some other, um, funding programs that are hazard mitigation programs that could be used maybe to help improve evacuation, um, or gain lands that is really high risk or something like that over time. There's also, um, urban renewal districts that you could use. Um, and so this is an example from Newport. They use urban renewal money, um, to use as a match with FEMA's hazard mitigation money, and they did these trail improvements to State Caving Hill, which is south, uh, in the South Beach area where the Hatfield Bridge Science Center is, and there's a whole host of agencies that are in that area and, um, the Aquarium and the South Beach State Park. So there's a lot of people in that area. It's, um, it's all on fill and it's, it's definitely all in the inundation zone, and but they have this one old sand ding that's above the inundation zone, and it's, uh, and they had it checked out, it's geotechnically sound and all that stuff, they think it will, it will still be there. Um, but they had all these improvements done, so they reinforced trails that cuts up, um, they put in more trails so people can access it from all sides. They put in lighting, vegetation management, and signage, um, all sorts of things to really improve that. So they use urban renewal as well as FEMA money to fund this project. Um, so that's just one example of ways you can finance. And I'm not an expert on this financing stuff by any means, but there's a lot of stuff in the guide, and that was actually written by consultants who specialize in municipal financing. So there's some good information in chapter five and chapter six about how you can pay for some of these, um, uh, tsunami evacuation improvements. And then, as I was sort of mentioning before, there's, um, a whole chapter dedicated to the tsunami evacuation facilities improvement planning. And this is really to look at, um, the city's, uh, evacuation risk as a whole, see what you're already doing, what you'd like to improve, and what, um, what could potentially be made new. And again, doing sort of standardizations of systems, um, what do your signs always look like, where do they go, how many do you want, um, things like that. And then like lighting and vegetation maintenance. And it's a good, even though, you know, it's so exciting, you're like, oh, I don't want to do another planning product that just sits on the. to do another planning product that just sits on a shelf somewhere. But this would, it could be adopted into your comprehensive plan, and it would be a reference that you can always go back to, which is really helpful in funding, especially like a lot of FEMA funding or federal funding, you need to have. It really helps if you reference something where you've made a recommendation to do something, and then you're like, oh, now we can do it. So give us the money to do it. So that kind of thing can really help. And it also just, I think, helps to pull together some different things that the community's doing and look at it comprehensively and make sure that there's, you can leverage resources when you can. Because obviously, a lot of different people are doing different things, and so it makes sense to try to pull it together. And so I would say the one other thing about that, if you did really want to do it and do it seriously, we do have some money from that grant budgeted for hiring a land use consultant who could do, or at least help you do this, so that like it wouldn't be so burdensome to do this kind of planning, that someone could help be hired to do that. So that's just an option. We can also just do it ourselves, and it doesn't have to be super complex or really detailed, but it's an option. I just wanted to put that up there. And then the last main chapter within the guide is on long-range community planning. And I think we've talked about this already to some extent, but it basically is just talking about relocating essential facilities before the event happens, and then also thinking about, once the event happens, how does the community deal with it, both immediately and in the long term? And so I think your, the South Wind master plan has already been doing a lot of this, but there could be additional work that we can do through this project on that kind of topic. So how you can update your urban growth boundary, which I think still needs to happen for this, right? So I mean, we could work on that. And then, you know, thinking through, like, what kinds of facilities would go there, identifying vulnerable areas in the city that are already in the inundation area. And then talking through, again, what I said before, that vacation of those sites, what are you going to put in those sites once they've moved? If you do move the fire station and the police station, things like that. So there's some long-term planning that can be done from this project if that's what you wanted to do. So then finally, there's just the, basically, another resources section that, you know, if you wanted to learn more and there's new tendencies. So that's kind of the guidebook in a nutshell. And I did want to just mention that there are some other communities doing this type of work. Currie County and Coos County are both in the public hearing phase of it, so they haven't yet adopted, but are very close within maybe the next month or two, barring any major problems. But they're both adopting a tsunami hazard overlay zone, and they're using probably almost exclusively the language that we have put as a sample. They're basically just adopting cut and dry. And it's been pretty good. It's helped us to have some learning experiences, some comments that people have made about it, and so I think we're learning from that. But so far, there's nothing, been no, like, really head rearing of any kind, really. Classey County did try to do it, and they were not successful. And they were going along pretty smooth until the last minute, and I wasn't here when they were going through that. I just started in October. But I, my understanding is that their biggest problem with the tsunami hazard overlay zone was that there was, there's an element that's a hazard disclosure statement. It would require homeowners who are in the inundation area to sign with a deed that they are in an inundation area and that they basically hold harmless to the county or the city or whatever, and they take on the risk of being in that area. I, they didn't like that. And that's fine, and you don't have to do it. And it's unfortunate that that came out so late in the process.
Why would anyone sign that?
They didn't want to sign it.
Why would anybody sign that?
Because it would have been a requirement, but they didn't want to. But so there was public opposition to signing.
Yes, because they're always willing.
Yeah. Right, so that's what I'm saying, like, we can just take that out, and it would have been nice to have known that through the process, because we could have taken that element out and passed the rest of it, do you know what I mean? And then it could have been good, and we could have saved some good stuff. But because of that one element, it got hung up. And so, and that's what I just wanted to mention, is that like, really, this is tailorable. Like, any of those things that become controversial, you can either change them or take them out.
These guys are forgettably cautious.
Yeah. And I think if you have a public, some public input throughout the process, that helps too, to like vet things that just aren't challenging.
We did, yeah.
So, yeah.
Excellent, that's good.
Sometimes more than people, I think, actually.
Yeah. So you're proud. And then the last one I would mention is that Newport did just a little piece of it where they basically have a waiver for height restrictions just in that South Beach area to allow vertical evacuation structures to be built, and that's because OSU is planning to build a new marine science building in the inundation area, and that was super controversial. And so to try to help mitigate for that, they're promised to build a vertical evacuation structure. So it's basically, it can be either a building, and it can either be integrated as part of a building or standalone structure, or it can even be an earth-in-berm. And it basically is engineered so well that it will not only withstand the earthquake, but it will also withstand the tsunami waves and the forces that come, and debris that comes in the water and falls into it and things like that. So it's engineered to withstand all of that and be high enough that if people are not able to horizontally evacuate in time, they can go up to this structure and survive.
Has one of these ever been tested in a real, sort of, quake?
There actually are, from Japan tsunami, there are some buildings that weren't even built to be vertical evacuation structures that withstood and people survived on by going there. So it is possible. We've seen it be successful in Japan. They, as far as I know, the only one that's been built on the West Coast for this purpose is on Long Beach, Washington. They built a new school, and the school's gym is the vertical evacuation structure. And it's really cool. I saw a presentation on it, and it's locked all the time except when the earthquake happens. I can't remember exactly. There's a mechanism that opens the doors so that people from the community can get in there. And it's basically just an open roof. There's no covering to it, but it's enough space for, I think, a thousand people to survive, because really, they have nowhere to go there.
With railings to hang onto?
Yeah, yeah, there's railings.
Just as a historical note, one of our previous mayors did a sort of sketchy design for raising this building up.
Inside.
A story or two. It looked pretty funny.
Yeah, interesting.
But, you know. It got a lot of press, Newport.
It's probably, it's always our recommendation, at least, to promote horizontal evacuation first and foremost, you know? That's the best option, is just to go to high ground as quickly as possible. But, you know, there are some areas that that is probably not going to work for some people, if they just can't get out in time, or, you know, so many bridges fail or they're landslide or something like that, that it's nice to have a backup option, especially if, you know, maybe it's not the XXL, maybe it's the large, you know? And in that case, it's much more likely to be successful, I think, to have a vertical evacuation structure. So that's something to think about. They're probably super expensive to build because of all the engineering that goes into them, so. Not sure. But we'll be doing a lot more of this land use work with all those communities I mentioned before that are part of this project. They've all signed memorandums of agreement as well, so they'll be working with us to do this land use part of things in the coming summer and fall. And then it's a major priority for the governor's office as well. She actually put a new chunk of money in our budget for next year to do coastal seismic resilience, and that was kind of all that she said, so who knows what that means. But it could be a lot of things, and it could be really good for our communities to get more work done. But it's just a proposal at this point, so we don't know if that money will be there or not. But it's nice to see that it's a priority at the state level as well.
Not controlling the challenges.
Is it in there?
It's not.
Oh, it is. They're gonna, they're gonna be doing it through, basically, all of their unincorporated communities are part of this project. So Nessgon, Pacific City, Mead Tards, Oceanside, what else am I not thinking of? Twing Rock.
I just did not list it there as well.
No, those are people outside of this that are.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, yeah. So then the other ones that are involved in this project are like Walport, Greensport, Florence, Coos Bay, North Bend, and then unincorporated parts of Coos County.
Mansyia.
Mansyia is not part of this project.
No?
I think they haven't really, yeah, but they're a city, not a community. Yeah, they, I mean, basically, at this point, we're going for low-hanging group for people who want to participate with us, and we haven't had a lot of positive, for land use work anyway, from Mansyia.
The young, no?
Mm-mm. The, for them, it's not quite, I think we're also trying to target the ones that are really vulnerable too. We definitely want to get to everyone eventually. It's just, you have to like chip away at it as we can do it, as we can provide staff time and funding.
I think the young would be incredible. It's right on the river.
Yeah, so they definitely have challenges, but.
Like sort of.
Yeah, at least it's a role.
I'm frightened of my.
Yeah, so we'll do it eventually there for sure. I think we're just kind of like going down the list and working with whoever we can for now. But yeah, they'll definitely be part of it at some point, we hope.
A lot of the recruitment happened before Meg came on board there. Her predecessor was doing that work, and he was looking mostly at people who worked on this project and were familiar with it. And so you can see the first two names on the list.
Yeah.
That's only because our names are at the top of the alphabet. Those are people who are familiar with this from having worked on the advisory committee, were I think the first people he approached.
Yeah, I think that, that's great, yeah. And yeah, again, like people who are really vulnerable, I think. I mean, obviously, everyone's very vulnerable, but I think some will and others. And so it's good to kind of, you know, work with who we can and hope it doesn't happen for a long time.
So if the governor is planning to have some money available and let's preempt it, it gets approved in the budget.
Yeah.
Then when would one submit an application for that? Can we kind of work backwards and see where that would fall?
Yeah. So maybe there's. It's, I don't know for sure, because we don't necessarily know what the money will be going for. But I think that it's probably going to be prioritized to do the beat-the-way modeling for those communities that have not yet gotten it and haven't and aren't funded through this project. So I think that's probably number one. So that would just be a contract of Delami. Number two would probably be technical assistance grants to communities to do the land use work. And so you could apply for that. I mean, you're already part of this project, you're not getting any money necessarily, but getting technical assistance. But you could obviously apply for those grants to do this same work. I don't know when that would be. It's, the budget would start in July, so it'd probably be, I would assume it's probably next winter, maybe, when they'd be asking for applications.
I'd tentatively plan on putting something into our department's budget request this year to cover some of that work next year. Unfortunately, I make all those decisions before July too, so I really won't know how that's going to line up. But it may just be a placeholder. It would at least be a line in the budget, maybe.
Yeah. I know, it's hard to plan these budgets, not knowing how they're going to go. It's challenging. We might not even have a coastal program. Yeah, either side. So then I just wanted to talk briefly about like what the city's next steps would be. So I would say, you know, kind of try to come up with what you think you want to get out of this project, what would be your goals, which of these different options that I've suggested do you think would be the most valued to you? Or if you have something else that I didn't talk about, we can also explore that as well. And then we'll try to come up with a plan of work and a timeline, a rough timeline, and then a public engagement process for all of that. Like I mentioned before, and it sounds like this is something that you do all the time, so having some sort of project management team that would provide input to this project so you would help to shape the land use measures that we come up with and connect with the broader public engagement process and help to support the efforts and bring it through to adoption. So those are just some examples of what a project management team might do. Generally, well, for, you know, for example, Coos County has basically a county commissioner, the planner, the planning director, and the emergency manager for the county, and then I think a public works person. They're the people who are on their project management team for this project, for tsunami resilience. Doesn't have to look like that at all, can be completely different makeup, but just as an example. And then the typical process, which I'm sure you are all very familiar with, would draft land use amendments, do public outreach and revisions, then they would go through a public hearing, so that the planning commission and city council, and then if it's recommended, it would be adopted. So that's it. But I'm happy to discuss further or answer questions. And that's a lot of information.
Since nobody's saying anything right away, the way I would like to see this set up is, as I mentioned, the TSA certification system plan earlier, we, assuming we're successful in getting that grant, and maybe even if we don't get the grant, I'm pretty sure the city council's firmly committed to moving forward on that. That would be starting, let's say, in the fall. And that has a long meetup, but it ends, and now I'm really guessing, in the spring with you holding hearings on that. So then that's going to be, you know, multiple meetings, work sessions, you'll need to have, there'll probably be a technical advisory committee, I would expect a planning commissioner to be on that. So that's, that's all of the transportation-related elements of this work, I think, go into that. All of the other elements, and I know this is somewhat an artificial division, but that's just the way it is, like the tsunami overlay zone, for instance, the comp plan amendments that are transportation-related, those, I think, are for, have a separate work forward. Now, maybe at the end of the day, you want to merge them back together, I don't know, but I think you could handle the other stuff, the non-transportation-related stuff sooner. Put together, we need to put together kind of a work program, a scope for that, what we're going to look at, a timeline, that sort of thing, and see if we can get those rolling more quickly, if that's what you're looking at. In terms of your own schedule, kind of skipping to another topic here, which is vaguely related, I don't know, you do immigrate, you're going to be looking at hearings on that probably sometime in the late summer, early fall. That's a guesstimate timeframe. That's going to consume quite a bit of your time also. I don't, you can't, I don't, we can't have all of these things come to you at the same time.
Is that what they wrote, written in the same year?
Yeah, yeah.
What are they thinking it's going to be about?
Well, let me go into that in a little bit more detail here. There's two parts to that, the, what I'm calling the science part and then the policy part. The science part is, in a draft form, I asked the people working on it who also took a hand me to make some corrections. When that document comes back to me, which could be very soon, I had expected to hold a work session with you much like this next month. But that's very schedule-dependent on John Allen getting his work done and you not having any other significant things on your agenda next month. I have a little bit of leeway in how I can manipulate that agenda, so I, but if something comes in and the clock's ticking, that has to go. So I really want to have that at a meeting like this, where you don't have anything else on the agenda, so you really can focus on that and that alone. That could happen as early as next month. The policy part of it, I think, is some months down the road from that. And then.
So the science part.
The science part would come first. And then what I think happens is you get the science part done with a work session, and then it just sits on hold waiting for the policy part to catch up. That probably goes through some work sessions in public involvement too. And then when you actually get the hearings, we merge those together. I don't mean literally, there's still two separate documents, but you hold hearings on that unified proposal there. So the goal here is to keep you from having, you know, three elephant-sized proposals on your plate at the same time.
And I know I should know this, but I don't. Who is doing the science?
John Allen at the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, actually, Meg mentioned his assistant who's on maternity leave, Laura, earlier. She's working on it too, so she's not away.
Are they private?
No, they're state employees.
State employees.
Yeah, we did a contract. We ended it to a memorandum of agreement with them to do that. Yeah, we have a contract. We ended up doing a memorandum agreement with them to do that one.
Okay.
And that met our requirements, that they didn't have any baggage from previous work for clients here.
Well, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, no, to me, it was a pretty good fit.
Paid consultants who have an agenda.
Yeah. Don't get me wrong, they pay them, but.
Well, I know, I mean, that, yeah.
Yeah, no, these are people who work with the state, don't have an agenda here, never worked for any private clients here. So they really met that criteria, which was really at the top of my list. That was a pretty, that was a pretty clear direction to handle the council on that. So I don't think there was any dispute in that. I don't wanna go deep into the weeds on do grading, because I know that's what I came here for.
Although, it's what I work on too, so.
Yeah, yeah, so be involved in that too. But I guess the goal is to try to keep these things moving forward, but not have them all appear on your agenda at the same time or even closely following month on month with each other. So that, that's a manipulation that I have to do behind the scenes in terms of managing your agenda. But that also kind of dictates how we might move this forward. The comp plan, tax and overlay zone part of this might be ready to move forward sooner than those other pieces. That's what I'm saying. So if this is something that you wanna see us jump on, you can. If it's something you wanna be more thoughtful about, push off into the more distant future, we can do that too. It's really kind of your preference how you see this playing out.
I'm gonna read and think, at least for a couple of weeks, people.
Clearly not a decision. Well, and I'll, I guess what I could do is queue this up for some more discussion at your April meeting to say, we have a work session, here are some options, what do you think? And then you can give us more clear direction going forward on that. I may have more information on how this and this other stuff's gonna play out, schedule-wise, but then too.
Also, since this, I, I may have heard of this and forgotten, but how about three minutes or so about the transportation system plan?
Sure. So, yeah, it doesn't here, because Cannon Beach is below the threshold, which is twenty-five hundred or five thousand anyway. But the population threshold, above that population threshold is mandatory. Seaside, Astoria, Warrenton, and the county all have transportation system plans. Your part is, I believe, in the process of putting one together, even though they're below the threshold. And we do not have one. Don't get me wrong, it's not that we don't do transportation planning, but the transportation plan is a kind of a more unified way of looking at this stuff. And it has some state funding associated with it at a pretty high percentage level. So if we can get this grant from the Department of Transportation, the L C D Growth Manager.
And what, what is it kind of about? Helicopters and boats or?
It's about, it's about streets.
Highway or?
It's, in Cannon Beach, it's mostly about streets. It's also about airports, pipelines, and port facilities. But it's about streets, motor vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian travel here. And there's two big add-ons for us would be, one is the tsunami evacuation and the other one is ADA compliance. Big items here.
The base of it isn't, it's not basically about emergency?
No, it's not.
Stuff. It's about, it's just about infrastructure?
Yes, it's about infrastructure.
Okay.
And we're, you know, it's closely naded in Public Works, but, and this is a more cynical view of it perhaps, you can't get a lot of transportation funding unless you have a transportation system. And we've tried to get money for bridge upgrades from ODOT. And, you know, if you don't even have a transportation system plan, you're so far down the list, you'll never get that money. So you really, to even have a seat at the table for that funding, you have to have a transportation system plan. Meg mentioned this, if you have projects you're trying to get funded, but they aren't mentioned in your plan, you're not gonna get funding. And that's really the case with transportation system plans. So Cannon Beach has been missing out on a lot of that because of, we don't have the plan in place. I don't wanna make this sound like it's all gravy, because it's not. It has some regulatory components that at some point down the road, I will bet you money that you won't like. There'll be requirements for transportation improvements that will be onerous and difficult to solve.
Won't seem like improvements.
It might not seem like improvements either. So it really is a big topic and it's gonna consume a lot of your time when that gets in front of you.
Okay, that, that's my three-minute.
Okay, I have to go to the three minutes?
Elevator. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Meg, thank you so much for asking.
Really interesting. I actually thought very little about that whole topic.
Yeah.
It's unpleasant. I mean, it makes me nervous.
Me too.
The whole discussion does, because I sort of blanked it all out.
But if you're prepared, then you don't need to be nervous.
That's true.
Well, I wanted to say thanks for letting me sit down with us too. And I know it's the part of this was planning to support public outreach and engagement. And so I feel continue to absolutely coordinate a P E prep and if there's anything we can do to help on that part, certainly.
Yeah, implementation is really the public outreach end of this, more than anything else. So as we start to kind of get more fine-grained about this, I think there are pieces, the street pieces, that will be more thoroughly, clearly.
That's on the get work.
Well, the folks that have preceded me, I haven't, and they're long enough to take any credit for anything. There have been some people who have done tremendous work. But thanks again for letting me sit in.
And I, almost certainly, have done have questions. Can I get your card?
Oh, yeah, of course.
I actually managed to discuss the ongoing planning item in that. We'll chat to do with next month's meeting if that's possible. I'll stop smoking again. So that really was the only thing I had under that. I can, I can email Meg's contact information to other people wanting.
I'm sorry. Does other people want her?
I'll send her contact information out to the planning commission.
Okay, let's see. Obviously, I don't need a motion to authorize signing of papers. We've got, we did. We have a history report. Anybody have anything on the tree report?
I did not see a tree report attached to mine.
Did I forget yours?
Maybe. No, they got it.
Well, I know Jam was really, didn't see what one, you know, was concerned about. The hill, right on the property line of the city, perhaps, well, I guess.
You know, you say it's not in, but if it's not in our jurisdiction, it's not in the county either, because it's on the line, right?
No, it, it's in the county. Everybody is assured, me and I'm pretty much assured myself, that it's outside the city limits. So it's, but the county doesn't regulate logging at all. It's really Oregon Department of Forestry that regulates logging in rural parts of the county. So that's who I've been talking with for the most part. Now, Michael Summers, who's the public works director of the county, is aware of this because those roads up there are, they're not literally county roads, but they are roads in the county. They're his responsibility. He's aware of it too.
Maybe Robert Seuss did this letter.
Oh, okay.
Not a very, not as strongly worded in his mind, but it was, you know.
Not a surprise. Good job.
But he did write one saying, you know, you gotta stop till figure out what's going on with the ZR, etc.
Yeah, that whole road, that was the surprising thing for me when I went up there, is the big.
Well, it was unpermitted, yeah. He just did it. He's not even here. He's in Mexico.
Yeah.
Property owner. So he was just doing this, you know, he's hired a logger.
Oh, this is the thing that's, okay, yes, now I.
Right, and the loggers aren't gonna be responsible, unless he gets the.
The Alaska guy? The Alaska guy?
Yeah.
The, Dr. Wayne confirmed this for me, that the forester, or the Oregon Department of Forestry said that they have the boundaries surveyed, so they know pretty accurately where those boundaries are.
And Dr. Wayne had his boundary survey, for sure. And so did the other guy.
The other guy did too.
John, what was his name? Last name? John, with the English accent. He had his survey as well.
But they, the logger had Andy Mendenhall, another surveyor up there, and they found those monuments and tied them in. So this shouldn't, there shouldn't be any encroachment. But on the other hand, you said that they broke somebody's water or something.
Yeah, and they also marked a bunch of trees on the right of way that's actually Dr. Wayne's. They were all marked to be cut.
Right.
And then that's, and then that stopped.
Yeah.
They didn't do that.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything regarding the order before I say the name is over?
Okay.
We can go on.
Thanks very much, everybody.